I am Harvis, graduate of the University of Washington. I have been an officer in Seattle Musician Union, vocal seventy-six point nine for twenty years, and as the Secretary of Treasury, now I am the President for the past twelve years. We are here today to present a report commissioned by the local, and I brought with us our researcher and our musicians. And go around the table and introduce ourselves. May I give you the direct start?
Hi, yes, so my name is Maybey Brown. I'm the author of the report. I have a Master's degree policy from the University of Washington, and I'm currently a PhD candidate in Geography in the University of Washington.
Hi, my name is Joey Wallbaum, and I'm a singer-songwriter, pianist. I've also worked at the college level, teaching choirs and such, and I'm involved heavily in about six different ensembles in the Seattle area.
My name is Frank Brandon, I'm a busker. I play banjo, Irish whistle, and a bunch of other instruments, and I have a one-man band that plays with other bands around Seattle.
My name is Tom Rosetta. I am a music promoter and producer. Sometimes you may recognize Triple Door, Makes Place, Neptune, Chop Suey, et cetera. Name?
My name is Neil Anall. I am a upright jazz bassist. I am the leader of Fair Trade Music in Seattle, and I am also a college of arts graduate.
Before we launch right into the report, it would be helpful to set some context. How do you gain to decide this was an important thing to do?
Thank you. One of the initiatives of the local has been to work with freelance club musicians to figure out with their help how we can begin to improve the wages and working conditions of those musicians. A piece of that work has been to commission this report. We felt it was important to survey the city of Seattle and actually find out what is going on in the industry. There are two parts to this report. The first part is based on governmental information, and the second part, which is extremely fascinating, is based on a survey of one hundred and twenty-four musicians. These are primarily musicians that are working in the club industry. In our business, we call them freelance musicians. Shall I move over with the paper? Okay, thank you. I'm just going to read a few notes into the record that will give some background on the report. This report looks at the impact of the music industry on Seattle's economy. This industry includes not only musicians, but those that are dependent on musicians or music, that would be like multiplier effect. Those impacted may work in manufacturing, wholesale or retail sales, video, film, and music publishing, education from grade school through graduate school, as well as private instruction. They may work in the theater, dance, music venues, creating symphony, opera, ballet into live theater, festivals, and circuses. We have found that the music industry has a significant impact on our area's economy. Direct employment in the industry provides over sixteen thousand jobs, creating one-point-eight billion annual direct footprint. The indirect impact, the circulation throughout our economy, makes a total economic contribution four-point-three billion per year, supporting over thirty thousand jobs. We were astonished to find out how big of an impact musicians and the music business has on Seattle's economy. While the industry is growing in our area, the musicians at the core of the industry are not sharing in that growth. Since the city's analysis of the economic impact in two thousand eight, we have added almost fifty-five hundred new music-related jobs, with an increase of six million indirect economic output and one-point-seven million in total impact. Despite this overall growth of about fifty percent in seven years, in the same period, payroll is only twelve percent, and payroll per employee has actually decreased by twenty-five percent.
And so you did a comparison of your study to the two thousand eight study?
Yes, that's reference.
Sure.
Although we like to think of Seattle as a music city, we need to do more to make music reliable and sustainable source of income. Our survey of one hundred and twenty-four working musicians found widespread problems with unfair treatment by venues, a lack of clarity on working conditions, and inadequate pay. Although a typical working musician earns the majority of his or her income through music, that musician earns only about fifteen thousand dollars per year from music-related income. We have three principal recommendations that have come out of our report. The first, making the city admissions tax more supportive of smaller venues, and that has already been substantially adopted by the council. Although more work is necessary to provide adequate transparency and accountability on income at the door. The second is that the city limit or eliminate blackout dates for musicians, which Joey will address in a few minutes. Finally, the city needs to work with Fair Trade Music and our union, musicians and venue owners, to promote standard written performance agreements, and ensure both a fair relationship and clear understandings regarding pay and working conditions. Much of the work done in these clubs is on cash basis under the table, and there's no written agreement, so we think that that would really improve the working conditions for these musicians.
And so we do have the voluntary program that you guys helped develop, yes, through Fair Trade Music, and that's a voluntary program by which clubs identify themselves as members, and in doing so, they agree to certain standards, one which is providing musicians a contract. To what extent is that being used currently?
I think I'll pass that question to one of our other musicians. Nate, would you like to address that?
Sure. Well, we have heard that our contract has been adopted by a couple of the venues. A number of them have come up when they found out that we were circulating the document. We're like, oh wow, we've been looking for something like this that we can use as a template for the acts that are coming through. I don't fortunately know how many musicians are taking advantage of this, but the response from the venues about having something that has been vetted by the performers themselves has been very positive. I hope that answers your question. It's just a little hard to have hard numbers on how many contracts have been exchanged.
Sure, yeah, the way I envisioned this rolling out, and it's probably off of what your plan was, but was that the clubs that were members and agreed to the standards would get some sort of a visible recognition? So that would be a way of both identifying those clubs that were adopting good standards as well as being able to get a sense of, identifying for the public?
Absolutely.
As well as being able to get a sense of to what scale people are agreeing to do this voluntarily versus looking at another non-voluntary approach to do the same thing?
We are pleased to report that we began distributing Lewandowski Cows that would speak to a club that has signed on to these agreements, and we have about twenty-five venues around the town that are with a pretty equal representation from all the neighborhoods in the city. Got out with Councilman Rob Ryan to several venues in his district, and keep an eye out for those, and hopefully those will be seen with increasing frequency as this campaign continues to go forward.
And let's think about whether or not there are ways that the city can help promote those outcomes.
Great, yeah. Thank you.
So we went to a few clubs and put stickers up on windows. Is it still too early? Are most of the shows coming through there with written contracts? Is that the expectation, or is it still kind of evolving in some shows?
I would definitely say it's still evolving. As much education that is needed within musicians about what's out there to protect them as education is needed in the public, and then also with the venues that are hiring musicians, are the best ways to go about doing things. But, you know, as our program goes forward, we're really pleased to announce that all of our findings and our documents that we're sharing are being met with a lot of enthusiasm, and it's just about trying to get all of the different elements to sort of line up together so that they can all start happening at the same time. And we do feel like that's not so far away.
Also, one of the incentives for the venues to sign up is that they would be constantly placed on Fair Trade Music website. So there's literally a map that's been put together, and it lists those clubs that are under the Fair Trade banner.
I'd just like to add that this is a major cultural shift in the way this has been done in these venues. It's going to take time, but we are committed to moving this program forward. Joey, would you like to speak for a moment?
Sure. The main thing that asked me to speak about was the blackout dates. There's two major issues that seem to be happening, as I've spoken to many musicians about this over the last while. There's an issue with the length of time before and after a particular performance that they do not allow musicians to perform within a certain area. And for example, one particular local venue does a deal where people cannot perform one whole month before, like one whole month after the time of your performance within the entire Seattle area. If a musician is working locally, that's stopping them from being able to work, you know, within the city. Generally, the feeling I've gotten is about two weeks is like, that feels like, you know, like fair, you know, like because we want to make sure people are attending, you know, because we don't want to go over saturated, and understand that whole side of it all. But the two-week thing, or two months in both directions, for me personally, I'd lost three gigs if I would have taken one gig.
Do any cities set policy in this area?
I don't know what the other cities are doing. Can I ask a question?
Is it, so I've heard about not a lot of festivals, but what you're talking about is more about clubs that actually do it than what's supposed to be the nature of it?
Yeah, yes, I want to talk about both, because that is on the local, the extreme local level, as far as like what's immediately affecting a lot of musicians that aren't necessarily at the level of being in a festival quite yet. And if they are at the level of being in a festival, we're going to have the issue of, there's no particular festival that I could cite that I'm not going to cite it, but it does have a three-hundred-mile radius. That means, that means if you're in Spokane, all the way out that far, you can't, you can't, you have to go that far to be able to perform within like two months, three months of, I mean, that's a lot, that's a long ways to go, first off. You lose three hundred dollars just trying to get out that far, you know, with your ensemble.
I can maybe speak a little bit to what other cities have done to address this. I'm definitely not an expert on this topic, but what I have kind of been led to believe is that other states have addressed this through the non-compete laws that they've passed. And what I'm currently understanding is that Washington is a little behind in some of those regards. We've been working, Fair Trade Music has been working with Dirk Stafford, tried to bring our perspective into the blackout date, which is one of the things that Modder spoke to. And we feel that perhaps by addressing, addressing this issue on a larger state level, we will probably be able to pick up a lot of musicians that are experiencing, I personally think they're going to be, which Joey's testifying to as well. And we're really hoping that there is, there can be some, some ground made there. Sorry, continue to rally them, but.
It's okay.
Francis, would you like to speak?
Oh yeah, I have a statement about busking in Seattle. It goes like this. My name is Frank Brandon, I play banjo, Irish whistle, and several other instruments. I've studied music all my life, including two years at Berkeley College in Boston. For the last seven years, I've made my living primarily from busking and street performance in Seattle and also all over North America. And I have found that simply setting up in public places and giving my music away in hopes of receiving tips is a better business model than being exploited by bars and pubs in Seattle. And there are many others like me, taking our music directly to the people rather than dealing with the so-called music industry. And there are also many giving musicians a regularly performed buskers. And we're most visible at Pike Place Market, but we may be found in public places all over Seattle. And busking is permitted by the Seattle Municipal Code, not missing the First Amendment. And I've never been treated by a criminal by the, for, by the SPD, but I've received such treatment in other cities, and most recently by Southern Transit security officers for busking at light rail stations, even on the street outside of the Beacon Hill station, where I was repeatedly told that Southern Transit stations are private property. And though many have not yet opened, these stations are vital to Seattle buskers because they are public spaces with perfect acoustic, constant flow of people, and of course, no rainy days. The amount of rain Seattle experiences in the winter since many buskers pack in from New Orleans or other such places, with the coming of the light rail, I see a potential for a new golden to Seattle underground music. And I hope the council will agree that this is the busker's right to use public transit facilities, and otherwise our absence will continue to be glaring the obvious, who's already a standing visitor to hurt Seattle's reputation and its sound.
Can I follow up a question on that?
Please.
So I, I think this recently, last year, witnessed a few great conflicts in the subways in New York, as I always move from one place to the next. What, how does that work in other jurisdictions? This is a little bit new for SoundCloud, and we obviously have, now I'm kind of following, we have a couple of stations in Capitol and University District. Do your folks typically sign up or do folks just show up? Or I mean, how do you manage Pike Place Market?
Pike Place Market has a permit system and has locations where performers are supposed to be, and that's because they have such a volume of performers there, and that's because they have such a volume of people. The, let's see, other cities have permit systems for the subway, and some don't. I think in New York, they have a system where you can reserve a spot and sign up and get a permit, but then there's other spots where people can use freely. And so, so we don't really, I haven't seen most of these stations yet, so I don't really know, you know, for one thing, if my acting is going to do well down there, but I think they definitely need to be open for, you know, someone who's acting like.
This is great spots down there.
Yeah, the Beacon Hill Tunnel especially, that's just heavenly acoustics. You play flute down there, and it just echoes down the tunnels in the back, it's beautiful.
That's great.
I want something that I think we can follow up on, kind of create some openings for some conversations with SoundCloud about, if they're thinking about limitations and the opportunities.
And I think for, I believe Southern Transit has announced an opening day yet for this station. They said first quarter, I imagine that's in the first quarter. But I also believe that they are, you know, actively looking to promote bigger opening with, you know, bringing.
Yeah, they've hired buskers before. My concern is that, you know, that it's free for people to use, whether they've been hired or not.
Right, well, I would say that if they think this is a good thing in the opening weekend.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Then how about it just happens organically forever? That would be great.
That's, that's what I would think, see.
Okay, well, we can have a conversation, and Councilman Rob Johnson is, City Councilman is on the Southern Transit board right now, so we can have a conversation with him and see if that's something he can work with.
Great.
The other thing you might want to think about doing is going to, on your report, and also deliver support on your, your recommendations, going and talking to the research, the research mission. That is a body of people that is tasked with advising the city on policy issues, and I think it would be really useful in trying to identify ways that we can have a broader conversation with the music community, with the industry, about how to use some of these ideas forward. I think the folks on the mission are, whether or not they're representing musicians or clubs, are tasked with moving forward, and I think it would be really helpful in helping us to chart a path.
We do, our Vice President Joe Sander is on Music Commission, and Kate Becker and Joe are here today, and we are working closely with them. Steve, do you have any remarks to share?
Sure. I'm one of the few people in Fair Trade Music that doesn't play an instrument, other than I played clarinet very badly when I was young, but I happen to love music. I've been doing music promotion and production for roughly the last ten years. Before that, I worked at Microsoft for about ten years, and in more of a business function. So what I kind of brought into this experience of music production promotion is more of a business perspective, less of a, you know, less of a musician perspective. But I like musicians very much, I like working with them, and that attracted me to Fair Trade Music. So I've had, generally, I've had really good experiences with venues I've worked with in Seattle. Probably three times in the last ten years, I've had a negative experience where maybe somebody didn't want to pay what they should. And most recently, about a year and a half ago, that happened to me. I had a really good band play at a local venue, had a very explicit contract, agreed to in writing, in email, stating, this is the door fee, will be paid the number of attendees times the door fee, no deductions unless otherwise agreed, blah, blah, blah. Well, at the end, they decided to make some deductions, and I, and they, they wanted me to sign the sheet at the end of the night, and I said, sure, under the condition that I can address this. When I addressed it with the folks at the venue, they basically said, yeah, sorry, we missed that in your email, but you're not going to get paid. It was only a hundred and seventy dollars. For me, it's a principle issue, because they're basically saying, I'm not, I'm going to short these musicians because I can. There was a lot of back and forth. Quite frankly, it felt like bullying. I'm a pretty good negotiator from my years at Microsoft, and it was hard for me. I did collect that money by threatening to take them to collections and treating them as if they didn't pay their utilities, and they eventually did pay. And that's how I was led into Fair Trade Music, is to get sort of advice as I was in the midst of all this, and I realized musicians, if it was hard for me, it's got to be incredibly hard for a musician who's mainly focused on their craft to have these kinds of discussions. In fact, you know, in most cases, I've talked to musicians and they, you know, they just have to eat a lock, sometimes not get paid at all, if they want to play that venue. So that's sort of the promoted perspective.
On the one hand, it's great to hear that you experienced the last ten years, it's just been three or so instances in the back. I imagine that other folks would have it higher, higher levels where it happens more often. And, you know, we just had a conversation earlier in this committee about offensive labor standards, and it's, wage stuff is something that, you know, we struggle with for folks that are actually employees, but we know that wage stuff happens for any contractors and other folks too, and I think it's unacceptable anywhere. And, you know, I, I really am excited about Fair Trade Music to help elevate that and help, as not being a musician, but being a consumer of music, to recognize and realize that that actually is happening. And the brand really helps me think more proactively, just like we do about Fair Trade Chocolate or Fair Trade Coffee, about, hey, I want to make sure that my consumer dollars, you know, and support folks that are playing by the rules that I set in our city, and I don't want to let those go to waste. And I think the hope is that the folks that may be playing that game, because that's just the way they think they're supposed to do it in business, and for us to say, no, actually, not missing that, not part of it at all, and probably folks that think that this is a great way to do business, and they should be ostracized, and we should go somewhere else if they don't, if they don't want to play that game.
Yep.
Well, that's the end of our report. Do you have any questions?
Do you have, does the report cover sort of what you feel like might be a representation of the kinds of abuses that employees face, or is that something that might be another, another analysis that you could do? Because I think it's always really helpful in promoting policy to be able to identify that there is a problem beyond the very important anecdotes and stories that people tell.
I can attest, yeah. So I think that the report is a good initial shot of talking to the working musicians about some of the abuses that they face. I think there's definitely room for a more, a more in-depth analysis. I think that exploring this issue further is essential to understanding working conditions in the music industry, and I would be pleased for that.
I believe in the report, there are some statements by musicians of abuses that have occurred to them.
Well, back, excuse me, back to the blackout dates. The city has a role to play in one of the festivals in Seattle, Overshoot, and I just, I guess I encourage us to think about as a city, how we can, you know, we want the festival to be successful, obviously, as I think everyone does. But making sure that we're being very thoughtful and appropriate on what those blackout dates are when we negotiate with whoever, I don't know exactly what their relationship is, but there's someone that runs that festival that's on city grounds, and so. I don't know if there are typically different standards for musicians that are traveling here versus local musicians, or?
Yeah, the main concern with blackout dates is to make it where when a band comes in that has a draw, they don't play at a music festival, they don't play at a local venue to sell it out, make more money in venues, it's.
So that makes logical business sense.
Right, but it's also a practice that exists, that is really put in place back in the seventies and eighties, and because music was a little bit different back then. There's the, you know, right, there's, there's a very wrong thing that was happening at that time, but it's, it's, it's just old thought that doesn't apply anymore.
I think a lot of, there's a distinction also to be made between a professional musician that is on a level where he's touring nationally, he or she is touring nationally, and then a local musician, while just as professional as any touring musician, is staying in one region to earn that living. And the issue that I think is that these blackout dates, they don't just make a distinction between those two types of individuals. It's a blanket statement that says, you can't work in this region for this amount of time. That doesn't affect an artist that's touring on a national scale, that's only going to be in Seattle for forty-eight hours. The next stop's in San Francisco, which is well outside the, in the blackout date. That's, that's a non-issue for an artist like that. But for someone like Joey, who lives in, you know, in the U District, to be told that you can't make a living for a month, two months.
Right.
In this large radius is absolutely.
And sometimes it's like three or four months. It's, it's.
Yeah, so you finally get invited to be in a festival, it's a step up, and if you accept it, you take a huge financial.
Generally, the pay for festivals for local musicians is low to nothing. It's treated as a marketing opportunity, so it's, you know, it's sort of a, you know, it doubles the problem, where you're not going to make any money doing this in a blackout.
One thing I think might be helpful is if we could get some assistance from the Office of Film and Music, and maybe collecting some examples of different non-compete clauses, and we could take a look at which ones have some harm on artists, and which ones do you think are more acceptable and actually make sense, according to sort of a shared understanding of what will work for the clubs, or what will work for your ability to earn a living. I think some of that, maybe information gathering, if possible, would help point us in a, again, in a path. I like to think of this meeting time as a place to actually work on issues, not just here for you, but to sort of identify what next steps we can take in order to solution and.
I think we definitely, as a community, feel that there is a great pact going around, but there does need to be a little bit of a give and take. You know, if, if an employer has the right to put a non-compete clause in the contract, then I think as on the other side of that, the artist should have a right to perhaps see a better paper trail for the money that's attached to that gig. If it's just a local club saying, you can't work for this amount of days, we should be able to ask, well, then what's the financial implication of that going to be? How much does your business earn realistically? Can I see those receipts so I can educate myself and make an informed decision as a small business owner? I think some increased oversight from the city and ever, would really help in learning what businesses are asking of artists.
And oversight, you mean as it relates to the?
The ticket sales, the ticket sales and the collection of that.
Well, we appreciate your interest in problem solving, and we will definitely continue to work with you on that. Thank you for the time today, and are there any final remarks? I think that asks about any further questions.
With that, we'll call this meeting to a close.
Um, yeah, so to say. I forgot the space going. Are your heads are blocking each other?
Nice. Okay. Okay, now, are there reporters here? Does anybody have a question? Yes.
Well, I want to hear. Come on, is there any TV doing this to you, or is it just me? I'm Josh Kearns from Cairo, and I'm Steve.
Okay, this is Josh from Cairo. Who would you like to speak to, Josh?
Well, you'll see.
Okay.
Believe it or not, I.
Go for it.
So you're the, now, you're the author of the study, correct?
I am the President of the Local, and.
So who actually did commission, who actually did this?
The Local commissioned it. Local seventy-six point. When we have that information, then we can begin to identify issues and begin to problem solve. Our goal is to improve the wages and working conditions and the lives of working musicians.
Now, somebody who has played in bands since I was in high school and I've played every club in town for the most part, I, I mean, I recognize everything you've described, but I don't see a real solution in there because the second you say, for example, "Non-compete" or "higher wages" or standard cut, they're just not going to book my band. So we're, how do we get from the obvious problem, which is that none of us make much money doing this, to actually having somebody willing to pay, given how many just bands we have? Yeah, tell me, you're Joey, is that right?
My friend Nate Ombro.
Oh, you're Nate. Who's Joey?
I am Joey.
And we're actually hoping that, uh, if what you describe does turn out to be ultimately true, which we don't believe to be true, because as we found 25 venues that have signed on to our, uh, fair trade music, uh, relationship standards, um, they are already willing to work with, you know, work with musicians to make sure that the, the deal is, is fair and, and treats both parties fairly. But if ultimately a solution isn't able to be met, you know, just between the two parties, that's, we really feel that a statewide solution to the non-compete issue would make it so that it doesn't put the onus on individual bands to try and do this by themselves. The state can step in and say, "Hey, Mr. Club Owner, Mr. and Mrs. Club Owner, you just can't do that." It, it won't put any, any kind of negative light on any individual band if the state, if the state says to the entire community, "This is a business practice that we're just not going to accept anymore."
Well, now, you're talking just not on non-compete, which, again, I agree. I've been, been blacked on both sides many times and worked with many festivals. But just wages in general. I mean, I played the Tractor, sold out on Friday night and walked out of there with, you know, 50 bucks for the band. How do we get to a point where you can actually get the clubs to agree to cough up a little bit more? I mean, I've done pay-to-play, I, you know, how do we get past that?
I can, I can weigh in on that. Um, part of fair trade music is, a large component is education. Um, most constituents, most consumers do not understand the dynamics that occur between a club and a musician. And as we move the campaign forward, we hope to educate the consumers so that they understand that how vital the music industry is to this community, and they will rise up and support the musicians that are working. This is a long-term solution. This is going to be a long-term solution because what we're asking for is a change in the way business is done. We're asking for a change in the way people perceive music. It's not a hobby. It's not for fun. It is a way of life. And people need to be able to feed their families, afford housing, afford medical care. And like I say, it's going to be a long-term solution.
Excellent. That's, please. This is, as you say, my name's Paul Pignan. I'm an organizer with the union. And, um, as Marder was just stressing, this is something that is a workers' rights issue and not just an artistic issue. And we'd like to give an opportunity for Nicole Grant, who's Executive Secretary, Treasurer, of Martin Luther King Jr.
Yeah, I'm not, that's, I'm, I want to stick with this closely.
Well, it's, it's a labor issue. We'd like, we'd like to give her a chance to say something about why this is important to workers in general.
Well-
Well, she can certainly talk to me. I'm interested.
And also Councilmember Herbold, talk about why this is an important issue for the city.
And I'll get there next. Thank you.
Did you get a report?
Yes, I did. Thank you. So realistically, when we've got 50 bands out there that are willing to play every night of the week, and a club can simply just say, "Okay, you don't want to do it, fine. You don't want to do blackout, fine." How do we, is it, do we have to enter a union thing, which is still, you know, I've never felt any leverage, and I'm about 20 years older than you, so I've been down this road.
We have, like I said, we have a large number of clubs that are-
I'd like to interrupt you here.
There's a large number of clubs that are adhering to the standards that we're asking. And what we've found, that that's enough clubs to support a lot of people. And sticking to the venues that give you a better deal than the ones that don't, you know, that's a big part of this, is we're really trying to educate, as Marder's trying to educate the community about which venues, which businesses are the, are the ones that are acting responsibly and the ones that are worthy of the community's support. Um, we're really feeling like if we can be a tool to show the general public that information, um, that there will be enough patrons that will want to support those venues that will, in turn, support the musicians fairly. That the venues that don't, that do what you propose, line up 50 bands and say, "You want it, you want it, you want it," they'll become irrelevant.
That would be great. Steve, I mean, you as a promoter-
Yeah, I mean-
I mean, is that, is that doable? Can we, no, that's fine. I mean, this is-
I want to give Joey a chance to talk here.
This is, this is the practical side of it. And, you know, there is idealism and there's realism.
We've been dealing with people saying that for the three years we've been doing fair trade music. And the reality is, is that you don't need to play in every club in town-
Sure.
-to have a successful go of it in a city the size of Seattle. And just by knowing who the fair players are, you can really, really do a lot better. Um, as the principal leader of this fair trade music, what convinced me that it was a safe thing to get involved with and to maybe stick my neck out a little bit was I looked at who I was employed by and realized that they were going to be the fair players that we were going to start identifying. As a jazz musician, I have that luxury to be able to work with some really, really great club owners that understand what musicians go through. And just realizing that, "Hey, I'm already in a really good position to do this work and advocate and to show other musicians this really safe network of club owners to work with, where you don't have to worry about them hitting one band against the other." There's really only, you know, I wouldn't say that's everybody in town that does what you were suggesting. Take the 50 clubs, the 50 bands and, and just lines them up and see who will take.
Well, but if you're playing jazz, are you playing the High Dive, the Comet, the Tractor? Any of those places?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
We all make Olivia. This, this town isn't big enough for you to not do that, so.
As a promoter, whenever, every show I've done in the last 10 years, I have a written agreement before the show. And I know exactly what the terms are. Generally, that works really well. And the clubs appreciate it, the band appreciates it. Uh, and what we're trying to do is also to empower the individual musicians to understand the necessity of a contract, not just, "Gee, I wonder what we made at the end of the night." So they can have a clear expectation that both the club and the, and the musician are on the same page. So part of it is bringing the musicians up to speed on, you know, the business side of what they're doing, which is negotiating the contract. And they're, they aren't very complicated, really.
No, you know, no. It says you're going to get a hundred bucks or whatever.
Or, yeah, or it's a percentage of the door and, and, uh, so-
That's, that's part of the issues that we're having though, is like, like, for instance, the percentage of the doors, they don't keep track of how many people are actually coming through the door. I've watched them and they're not, they're not clicking the things that they need to be clicking. And when you're done, you don't have any piece of paper that says how many people actually came through. And you're going, "Well, you got a percentage of this," or "You got all the door, but I'm getting handed $300 after a whole show going, 'How many? Split this among all people.'" And I know there was more people than, than what $300 according to this is supposed to give. Um, the other, the other issue that I think we're trying to work towards is just creating a, a better sense of quality control on both sides. You know, happy musicians make happy music, happy venues, you know, it, it all works together. You know, the, the venues themselves create an environment that the musicians can thrive in. Then the musicians can get up there and take that energy and put it out towards the crowd, which then it makes people feel good, you know? And that's the whole, it's why we're doing this, is to try and create awareness, trying to create messages across, trying to, you know, grow, um, uh, the way that we think as a community. Musicians provide all this stuff. On top of that, we're also trying to encourage other music, other people that have not stepped into the music world to take a chance and step into the world. They're, they're just up there kind of disgruntled, you know, that's not very encouraging. And it's a fact that music is one of the, is not one of, but the only thing, the only, uh, craft that actually stimulates the entire mind. And that's scientific fact, you know? So people actually literally get smarter just by trying music. And that's why we're out there. We're trying to get people smarter, you know? And here it is being pushed down and repressed when it should be completely the other way. And then on top of that, you also have East Coast versus West Coast. If you go up and down the East Coast, the pay is a lot more consistent. You know, they've got a lot more time to develop all that. We're, we're still kind of babies and we're still learning from that right there. But I've talked, I've talked to a lot of musicians that come from the East Coast and they say straight up that, that Seattle just, it does not, does not operate on the same fair standards as far as, you know, pays and contracts and just, just the standard of operation. So we're trying to, we're trying to level it out, and not only for us, but also for all the other cities that are, that are out there that are having struggles with this as well.
Can I, can I add to that?
Yeah. Who are you?
I'm a musician.
She is. Who are you?
I'm Ed Mays, and I'm in the, um, fair trade music also. I'm a drummer. And I'm, you know, I've been playing, uh, since 1971. And in Seattle and all other places in the country. And that's what I want to add, is that, uh, you know, there are places like Austin, you know, and, uh, Nashville. I was down Southland and even Denver, but especially those first two that, that actually, you know, uh, have music as a part of their, their business model. Then they, uh, uh, have gone really far to actually, you know, study the music business and really promote musicians, right? If you go to Austin, you'll see music in banks, in shopping centers. And of course, in certain areas, there is just one club after another.
Well, but you could argue the city does that already. They've got lunchtime programs and all that.
They do that a little bit. But the thing is, Seattle is a big city. And compared to other cities, there's no music business here. You know, because, because when I went down to Houston, you know, I didn't have a prop and I didn't gig every single, uh, week, you know? If I didn't have a gig by Friday, I would have a gig. And I was always looking for the traveling gigs, hotel gigs, and, you know, and I toured all over the country from there. It doesn't really happen here, you know? You might go to a, a Dende, Oregon or something, you know? But, um, you know, it's, it's, it's an attitude. People around South really support live music. So, so what we're trying to do is like change the attitude of people, you know, to support live music, you know? And that's something that the city could help with. And, uh, you know, the different business associations, you know, could help with that a lot. You know, maybe change that attitude.
Okay. Thank you guys very much. I mean, believe it, I've been down, you know, I've been fighting this fight for, well, I'm 50. I've been doing it since I was 16 in LA. I've lived in Austin, and I, so I, I hear you on all of this. I just also see the practicality, the reality, which is there's a shitload of bands here. And there are, you know, the venues, the key venues, whether, well, I'm not going to get into like the new models, but, you know, there's just so many clubs that have the upper hand. I don't think we can bring some of that power back without them just saying tough shit. You know, we don't need you.
I think that's kind of where fair trade is coming in, where, you know, the, the venues have the power in so much as that the, the musicians aren't all on the same page. If you can get everybody on the same page and act collectively, then, you know, look at, you know, venues like the Tractor, the High Dive, the Blackout, blah, blah, blah. I mean, their whole business is musicians. If they didn't have a musician, people would not come and spend money in that bar. So if access to the talent pool, uh, kind of required better behavior, and those clubs I'm finding, by the way, but, uh, uh, you know, things are just happening. The other thing is that fair trade, we're trying to shine a light on the good clubs or the clubs that have signed on with us and that we think are treating musicians fairly. And when you do that, you know, hopefully over time, someone's going to go, "Hey, well, how come you guys aren't on that fair trade list?" You know, and you, uh, again, yeah, just shine a light.
I think what you guys have touched on, I mean, to me, the most resonant thing of all this stuff is that fact that the whole notion of fair trade, like the fair trade coffee, we've seen people shift that they're willing to spend more for fair trade products, that, that there are consumers that will choose based on value. And it's never been articulated as a value proposition before when it comes to music. It's, "Well, I want to go to Chop Suey or whatever, just it's Friday night. It's a capital where you always went." And you don't give a shit at all about that, you know, that element of it. I think it's, that's a huge, that's tremendous power.
That's, that's part of what we're doing too, though, is also trying to bring back the community awareness of what's happening locally. Because honestly, you go around and you ask the block people, like, "Where do you go to find local artists?" You know, we're, we're bombarded with Hollywood. We're bombarded with, with, you know, our TV advertisements and all that stuff telling us of all these artists that aren't here. You know, we need a spotlight locally that allows people to have a chance to fall in love with people that are right here in their backyard that are, that are putting out music just as high quality as what's coming out of LA and such. Um, that it's here, it exists here in, in Seattle.